Okay. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Yeah.
Alderman Bruce Simmons.
Yeah.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yeah.
Alderman Revelle.
Yeah.
Alderman Rainey.
Yeah.
Alderman Fleming.
Yeah.
Alderman Fisk.
Yeah.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yeah.
Alderman Wynn.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
All right. Terrific. Thank you, Clerk Reed, and welcome, everybody, to the Monday, February 25th, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. I believe Alderman Braithwaite will be here and should be on his way, so we will have a full council tonight, all nine folks. I just have a couple of quick announcements. I want to thank everybody who came out to the Town Hall meeting last week on Wednesday at the Ecology Center. We had a nice discussion about a variety of issues here in town. One of the things that I mentioned at that meeting, and I emailed a couple of folks that are part of the Harley-Clark group, and I just wanted everybody to know, at one point, we were thinking about adding Harley-Clark or having that on the agenda this evening, but given the other item that has a lot of attention, we want to make sure the city council has a thorough discussion about in regards to the library parking lot. We've moved the Harley-Clark discussion to March 11th, the Monday, March 11th meeting. And that discussion really will just be about process and a discussion of the council members on how they think we ought to think about moving forward as a city with the Harley-Clark mansion. So that's going to be on March 11th. If you did grab an agenda, you see that it's Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm going to do a proclamation on that. There's someone here in town that I really, who suggested it, and I want to be part of it. He can't be here tonight, so we're going to do that proclamation and talk about that on March 11th as well. City Manager, any announcements?
Yes, I'd like Mario Tretto to come to the podium. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I know you know why Mario is here, but I need to share with the rest of the community that we're losing our deputy city attorney, who has been tapped by Governor Pritzker to take the role of Director of Real Estate for the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. So we're very excited that Mario has been selected for that role. He is the third Latinx and second openly LGBTQ state director appointee, and in this role, he will serve as the head regulator for the state of Illinois's real estate industry overseeing professional education, licensing, regulation, and discipline for nearly 100,000 licensees working in six real estate-related professions. And his appointment is pending Senate confirmation, so we'll hope for that all goes well at the Illinois State Senate. He has served as our deputy city attorney for the last several years, where he provides counsel to the city council and the staff on a variety of issues. Mario, as I know many of you know, is very active in the larger Chicagoland community. He serves as chairman of the Board of Directors for the Howard Brown Health Clinic at FQHC with 10 clinics and a youth center serving 35,000 patients throughout Chicagoland, and is also president of the Indiana University Maure School of Law-Latino Alumni Board. He has been recognized by a number of organizations, including the International Municipal Lawyers, the Hispanic National Bar, and the National LGBT Bar. He has received accolades from Crane Chicago Business and a whole variety of other organizations and publications for his good works. He has his Juris Doctorate from Indiana University and his Bachelor of Arts from Washington University of St. Louis. Mario, you've done an excellent job. You have helped guide us through many assorted tales and troubles here in Evanston, but certainly our loss is the state of Illinois's gain. Best wishes to you as you move forward in your career. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for the kind remarks, City Manager Bob Kowits, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I want to take a few moments to really thank each and every one of you and the friendships that I've developed and the wisdom that I've gained. Looking out in the audience, I see former Alderman Mark Tendem, who's someone else that I looked up to, former mayor Tisdale, Jane Grover. I just have a lot of really great memories working here, so thank you for making the past five years amazing. I've learned a lot of what it means to be a public servant. I made a transition five years ago, and Michelle and Grant Farrar took a chance on a young attorney wanting to see what it meant to be a public sector employee, and I haven't looked back ever since. So I really appreciate all the wisdom that you've imparted. I hope to take that with myself to the state of Illinois. I'm excited for some new challenges, and this isn't goodbye. I'm sure I'll see each and every one of you in the next coming year, so thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, one last comment, just a reminder that the council is meeting on Saturday, this coming Saturday, March 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. is the first of two meetings to talk about city council goals. We'll be talking on Saturday about the facility and infrastructure goal, as well as the long-range capital financial planning goal. So that'll be at 9:00. I certainly don't expect that to go any longer than noon, but I just want to put a plug in for that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, City Manager. And Mario, I just want to say, everybody up here and everybody in our city is really, really proud of you and the work that you've done here and the position that you're about to take as an appointee of the Pritzker administration, so it's great. Thank you. All right. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, just one very quick announcement. I want to let members of the public and the council know that for public comments sign-in, folks can now go to the city clerk's page. You know, we still will have folks out here in the ante room to help folks sign up, but if you would like to sign up on your own, you can go directly to the city of Evanston's website. You can go to the Government tab and click Public Comments Sign In, and you will be able to sign in for public comment for the corresponding meeting, as well as review the agenda, the public comment guide, and the rules and organization of the city council of Evanston on this page. So we just wanted to let folks know about that resource. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, City Clerk. We're going to turn now to public comment. Now, tonight, we have about 25, there's a couple people double-counted here, so about 25 people. So I'm going to do a minute 45 per speaker. Council rules are we allot 45 minutes. We divide the number of people by 45 minutes. The mayor does some rounding and says, okay, minute 45 tonight. So we got a minute 45. Clerk Reed will keep track of the time. And I just, as always, ask that everybody be respectful of the different perspectives that will be shared tonight, and then afterwards, we'll get into the council agenda and have a thorough discussion about several of the issues. I know library parking lots on the mind of a lot of people that signed up, so we'll hear a lot about that. So I'll rattle off the names of the first three speakers, so people can get ready. And again, if you hear the buzzer go off, it means you're up about, close to your time, so I am going to ask if you can just wrap it up within 10 seconds of that, to be respectful of the other people that want to speak as well. Today, we've got first Ray Freeman, Doreen Price, then Mary Rosinski.
Where do you want to go?
Excuse me? All right. There comes Ray. Ray's sitting in the back bench today. All right. So we got Ray, then Doreen, then Mary.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, city council, Clerk Reed, and city manager, Bob Kowits. I forgot. I want, I'll keep it short. I have a bunch of questions, but I'll save them for next time. I wanted to thank Mayor Hagerty for the Town Hall meeting at the Ecology Center and for the coffee and the hot chocolate. And it was great to have a dialogue for a change. We need to get the feedback from our questions and concerns, and I was wondering if we might be able, in the future, in the near future, to have maybe monthly meetings, or maybe twice a month, with each alderman taking turns to have a Town Hall meeting at the Ecology Center with coffee and hot chocolate.
And the fireplace going.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we've got Doreen Price.
Nothing like being preempted by coffee and hot chocolate. The only thing I can do is say thank you for listening to what I said last time about this and giving some consideration. However, it's obvious that it's been crammed into probably an area of not enough discussion, perhaps, and it has to do with police power. I was inspired by two Town Halls, and that was the mayor and also the chief's Town Hall with regard to police power. And police power, it was really hit me between the eyes, because all the things you're struggling with in terms of how you want to be treated if the cops pull you over, he answered every question. And it had to do with reasonableness, let's see, let me read the priorities here. Your rights, responsibility, and reasonability. And the reasonability is what crosses over the line in terms of when you make a judgment. It might be legal, but the person that's asking for something to be done might not be reasonable, and so in that case, you might intervene and help in terms of someone who's being victimized. That's the short end of it. The other thing is, is that this is a very extensive program he's undertaking. Anything done without a civilian review board, which is not currently present, for police powers, or people to go where they can do it for the police, but not for the city to complain or be heard, is definitely unfair and also not good for the poor that are struggling with a lot of other issues. So it would be, this council, I pray, to continue discussions along, correcting the ordinances like you said you were going to do, and then look at the police power in light of those corrections in terms of how we view, how we want citizens treated in terms of equity and climate change and everything else in the council's goals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Doreen. All right. Mary Rosinski, then Melanie Cody, then Michelle Sweeney.
Hi. Good morning, or afternoon, evening, whatever. I do want to say thanks for the Town Hall meeting. I think it brought out a lot of things and discussion, which was always good. I would encourage you, do not vote for the library parking lot to be sold. I don't think that sounds like a really good project, and since Dapper didn't like it and other people, I think it would be good to listen to our commissions. What I am concerned about, again, as I said, is Robert Crown. I just got a letter of intent that was with Beacon School that indicates that one of the conditions on that $500,000 was to build a new facility, and I think something that maybe you haven't tossed in, and I know I just caught Eleanor before we walked in, Alderman Revelle, but it's really important. I think we need to protect the interests of all the taxpayers and residents here in Evanston, and since these things are not finished, I think that we have leverage at the, where this project has gotten, it's not that it's not a beautiful project, but it is just definitely at this point not affordable with these types of negotiations. So I'm just really saying again, for a long time, we need to renegotiate. There also is a question, I'm being doubted a lot, on social media and other places as to where I'm coming up with my numbers for the debt service on Robert Crown. And I just want to say, this piece of paper, which I will give to you, is a city piece of paper, and it says that by the year 2024, we're going to have a debt service of $3 million a year, right? This year is basically a million, and then it goes up to a million five and a million eight, and then 3 million. I don't want to see us cutting all the services, and I think we have to really look very, very hard at this project and figure out how the hell we are not going to go bankrupt on it. And thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We've got Melanie Cody, Michelle Sweeney, then Austin Sheer.
Thank you very much. I'm Melanie Cody. I'm the current president of the Women's Club of Evanston, and I'd like to read a brief statement. I'm a horrible public speaker, so I'm going to just read it. The leaders of the WCE acknowledge that the city parking lot is an enticing spot for development, and the WCE has, since the outset of this process, acknowledged that this property will be developed eventually. We are asking this city council to vote no on this development tonight and to instead take time to work out the right development for this special location. This very special block enriches Evanston via the Public Library, the Francis Willard House, and the Women's Club of Evanston, which over the past 10 years has contributed over 2,015,000 hours of volunteer service to the community. Also, 54 properties located on this block contribute over 335,000 in tax revenues in 2017. If you add in the library parking lot revenue, the parking revenue, it's clear that this block pulls its weight in the community. The 11th-hour changes submitted last Thursday afternoon do not make a dent in the concerns cited by Dapper and the Planning Commission, which led to their separate and concurring recommendations for denial. Voting no respects the city zoning code and the professional judgments of the city's staff and plan commission. It's simply the wrong building for the site, and the developers' inadequate responses to city concerns and cavalier interactions with the property's neighbors are very troubling. Please vote no. This proposal is flawed. There are many reasons it's been denied every step of the way. It's time to go back to the drawing board with the involvement of Evanston's community and those in the surrounding neighborhoods, so we can figure out together what's the best use of this very special property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Michelle Sweeney, Austin Sheer, then Don Flaton.
Hi. I'm Michelle Sweeney. I'm the club's manager of the Women's Club of Evanston. I understand the financial needs for the city of Evanston. I realize that the library lot is a valuable asset, one that, when sold, will assist the city's finances. However, not this proposal, not this building. Its footprint is too large and does not work. The building requires no less than seven site development allowances in order to make it profitable for the developer. I wonder why people who live and work near the proposed development will be made to carry the burden for their profits. Even with changes to the building height, the footprint of the building is too large. It is the wrong building for the site. In the four and a half years that I've been an employee of the Women's Club, I've become familiar with the challenges to safety, both my own and others, while walking and driving on this alley. My concerns are pedestrian traffic from McManus and the library, including children in the alley. When there is snow or ice, this is not a two-lane alley. The building would create a canyon effect in the alley. Tight vehicular traffic restricting necessary deliveries to the Women's Club. Restriction in alley access for fire department apparatus, notably to McManus and the library, the latter's risk being higher since it is a public assembly building. Lack of onsite parking for the proposed building's employees. And during construction, crane placement and sidewalk closures. There is not a curbside sidewalk across the street from this site. I am here to ask you today to vote no on the library parking lot proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Austin Sheer, Don Flaton, and Vicki Burke.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. I'm also against the library parking lot building, and I think the citizens of Evanston have expressed their opposition to it clearly. Evanston residents prefer the open-air parking lot because of its clear visibility. You can see the open spaces. It's easy to access, and it's especially good for mothers with small children who don't want to go into an enclosed building. If you're getting an estimated $10 per space per day, then you're getting a 4% return, I'm sorry, 6% return on a $4 million asset. That's a very decent return. The two-year period of construction for the building may actually harm the businesses that you're purported to help with this building. If you look to the future, it's not very hard to imagine that 74 public spaces will be reduced in number or taken away, because it will be difficult to lease a Class A office building without inside parking. And at that point, the building developers will come back and argue economic necessity, and it'll be very difficult to refuse those arguments. A large number of office workers may get dropped off at Chicago Avenue in front of the building. That's also very bad, because that's the worst bottleneck in rush hour, evening and morning rush hour. So that's a very bad alternative. In addition, well, a better alternative to this building is the proposed 18-story office building at 601 Davis. That's a reasonable location for an office building. Wrap it up. Okay. I hope that you vote against the building. I think the citizens of Evanston have expressed themselves. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Don. All right. Excuse me, Austin. Now we got Don, right? Sorry about that. All right. Don Flaton, then Vicki Burke, then Laurie Osborne.
I have three minutes' worth of remarks that I'm going to try to...
You can do it.
I'm Don Flaton, and I'm the beneficial owner of the Chandler's Building located at 630 Davis, which overlooks the new Fountain Square Park. I'm here to bring up a point which I have not heard others bring up, but it's out of self-interest. I'm here because the developer seeks to evade its obligation to provide adequate new parking for its project. Chandler's has no onsite parking, as you probably know. Built in the early part of the last century, it was built at a time when it was common not to have onsite parking in downtown properties. Chandler's is landmarked, so it cannot reinvent itself. Chandler's tenants and their customers rely on the city's public off-street parking. If you reduce the amount of available public parking, Chandler's and other legacy downtown properties will suffer. Of course, things are different now. Zoning laws require new developers to provide adequate parking. However, as I read the submission, the Chicago Avenue developer proposes to avoid the requirement that they provide adequate off-street parking by leasing 203 spots from the city lot on Church Street. That's 203 public off-street parking spots that will become unavailable to the public and to all of the existing downtown tenants, clients, customers, and shoppers. It is truly robbing Peter to pay Paul. I know Evanston would love to see less traffic and more transit use, but where's the evidence that that's going to happen? Every long-term resident of this community knows that street parking is becoming dear. If electric cars are the future and fulfills the promise of lighter, quicker electric cars in the future, what happens when everybody wants to commute to Evanston with their little e-cars? So in closing, rather than penalize or put at risk the legacy properties like Chandler's, I ask that you make this developer adhere to the parking requirements that are in force. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Don. And we've got Vicki Burke, Laurie Osborne, then Glenn Medea.
Laurie Osborne is in India, so it'll be Glenn next.
Okay.
I am acutely aware of the proposed planned development for the library parking lot because I represent the neighbor to the north. As board president of the Center for Women's History and Leadership and as council chair for the Francis Willard House Museum and Archives, I want to clearly state that we understand the city's desire to develop that land. We are not opposed to development, but it must be the right development. Unfortunately, the project before you is not that development. This complex site is more than what's between the lot lines. Any development here has an impact on public safety, zoning, historic sites, local businesses, and Evanston's own public library. Those impacts are significant for the vibrancy of downtown. Both Dapper and the Plan Commission have recommended denial of this development after multiple thorough painstaking reviews. They made recommendations to the developer for changes that would satisfy the city's own zoning and standards, but these benchmarks remain unmet even with the last-minute changes submitted by the developer less than a week ago. I urge you both, as a representative of the neighbor to the north and as a private tax-paying citizen since 1975, to respect the findings of Dapper and the Plan Commission, the city's expert bodies, and vote no on this planned development. And let's move forward to find the right solution for this development. I want to end by inviting all of you to make sure that you come to the truth-telling event at Northwestern University that we are hosting with Northwestern University and Loyola University of Chicago, where we are going to open up a discussion about Francis Willard and Ida B. Wells. This is groundbreaking women's historic discussions about racism with white women and suffragists and temperates and black women. It is truly groundbreaking, and you will be highly impressed. That is also what we have been doing for the last two and a half years while we've been trying to address this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. We've got Glenn Medea, then Mike Fasilko, and then Bruce Enbok.
So as Vicki mentioned, Laurie is in India right now, but she has a statement. My name is Laurie Osborne. I'm the director of the Evanston Women's History Project and the Francis Willard House Museum. I'm also a member of the Women's Club. I want to pose a series of questions for you that I hope you will consider. Why are we not talking about how much the current property owners on the block have endured with this lengthy and complicated process, and how much they will have to endure if this building goes up as designed? These owners are taxpayers, or they represent historic not-for-profit women's organizations who have made long-term commitments and great contributions to Evanston over the years. If the parking lot is to be developed, and I'm not opposed to development, is this building really right for this site? Is this truly the best and only use we can imagine, or might the goal be to enhance and not harm this historic setting? On this block of Chicago Avenue, there are remnants of a historic neighborhood, of modest homes once filled with ordinary people who did extraordinary things. Other historic neighborhoods in Evanston such as this have been compromised, even sacrificed to development. Do you want that to happen yet again, but this time on our watch? Let's not act as if we don't have time and choices, because we do. Let's take the time to get this right, because Evanston deserves something better, indeed something brilliant. I hope you will exercise your choice, think long-term, and do what's truly best for all of Evanston. My statement, despite repeatedly voicing our three major concerns during this years-long process regarding the design and potential impacts on our property from the proposed library parking lot building, property security, water runoff protection, and the transition zone between office building and our southern property border, the developers decided at the 11th hour to attempt to do something. After repeatedly voicing my concern about the five-foot setback which will destroy half of the roots and crowns of 18 trees on the property's border, my concern that the proposed building will put much of the property in deep shade most of the year, which will hasten the demise of the trees with that shadow, and that I have repeatedly pointed out that we have a historic landscaping plan in place, the developers come back with the offer planting three trees on our property. So we are expected to trade off 18 or more trees that will likely kill, three of which are 125 to 150 years old, with three new trees which will be planted in deep shade. This despite the fact that I pointed out at the last planning and development meeting that developer is legally obligated to pay for all trees that would die as a result of their construction activity and impact of the building. And best yet, this is now listed as a public benefit. I have nothing more to say.
Okay. Thank you. Mike Fasilko, then Bruce Enbok, then Carl Klein.
Mike Fasilko, 27, 28 Rees. I'm just going to add my voice quickly to asking you to vote no on P1. That's the parking lot plan. Others have spoken very well about why. I also want to thank Mayor Hagerty very much for conducting the Town Hall and for listening to many people who spoke on a number of issues, but a lot of people spoke regarding Robert Crown Community Center and its cost and its debt. The mayor accepted a letter, open letter, that evening that was sent just before, which was also transmitted to all the council members and the city manager, the city clerk. The mayor said that night, and I think I'm quoting correctly, that he would ask the city council to look at all of the recommendations contained in that letter, and maybe other recommendations that come forth, to help reduce the cost of the building, to help defer, or to eliminate, I should say, much of the debt that's coming as a result of that building. And there are articulate recommendations to do that. I'm not going to list them tonight. I take it at your word. You will ask the council to look seriously at that list. A previous speaker spoke about a letter of intent that was, saw the light of day today. I'm not sure how that happened, but I think whoever issued it, it was posted on one of the social news sites. It's a remarkable letter, and I think everybody, if you haven't seen it, you should read what's going to be presented to you in the weeks to come, about some of these deals that have been struck by someone other than a city official. You know, it sounds good in press, somebody's going to give you $500,000, but when you see what they get in exchange and what the city does not... see what they get in exchange and what the city does not get in exchange, it's just remarkable. You know, five years of payments, that's not going towards construction, that's going towards interest on a debt. They're getting naming rights, branding rights, first use and...
You need to wrap it up, Mike, we're at the...
Okay. I encourage you to please look at that, it was posted today. We can't live with that kind of agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just on that, so everybody understands, the agreements that the city is striking on Crown for the philanthropy, those are all going to be, you know, publicly available and part of the packet and all of that. They're just not done yet, so I'm not sure about the one that's being referred to today. But even people up here at this diocese haven't had the opportunity to look at those, but they will be. Bruce, come on up. All right, we've got Bruce Enbok, Carl Klein, and Virginia Beatty.
Hi, Bruce Enbok, 42-year resident, First Ward now, Seventh Ward for 35 years. This is in regards to the library lot project. This may or may not be a nice building, but it doesn't really matter because it's in the wrong place, and it never should have been proposed. It's not a financially viable project, and that should be concerning to us all, not wanting to have a development that is doomed to fail. And having experienced this arena, I can say that without question that this one is not financially feasible from the onset and is even less so now, which is probably among the reasons that previously two or three other developers wisely declined to come forward with any proposal at all. Although we now have 75 public parking spaces, we now unbelievably leave the office tenants with zero spaces. Zero spaces for building tenants is in violation of the purchase and sale agreement and therefore cannot be permitted. Additionally, a Class A building in the suburban office market without onsite parking for its tenants is, well, simply not Class A by definition. So we proceed here with a revised, unrevealed, and last-minute Hail Mary. However, it must be admitted that nothing which has defeated this proposal in our DAPR Committee and Plan Commission meetings has been rectified here today. If anything, it has been rendered worse than before. Please respect and uphold the fine and considered work of our DAPR Committee and Plan Commission. Please do not make their good and valued work irrelevant. Please reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. We have Carl Klein. You don't look like Carl Klein.
I'm not Carl Klein. I'm Janet Stidl. Carl Klein couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to speak on his behalf. At the last planning and development meeting, he brought up a very important concern which bears repeating tonight. There is a condition, Condition E, spelled out in ordinance 4019, that reads, "Within one year of the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the building, the applicant must submit a traffic study analyzing the turning movements and parking utilization within the garage accessed off the alley immediately west of the site, including analysis of any traffic incidents adjacent to the site. Based on the analysis of the traffic study, the city reserves the right to require additional traffic calming measures or operational restrictions. This condition in the ordinance is particularly disturbing. It is anticipated there will be traffic incidents. What is the wisdom of approving a building that you know has a likelihood of posing a threat to public safety, especially in an alley of such high pedestrian traffic, which includes the most vulnerable, our children and youth students and our seniors? This planned development should not be approved with the site and building details which warranted Condition E." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Janet. Virginia Beatty, Harris Miller, then Steve Miller.
Good evening. This is to the mayor and council and everyone else who's interested. I did a little reading this past week, and I would like to speak a bit about the Comprehensive Plan, which is the official statement for local government policy regarding physical development of Evanston. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, I've given our important people that, but I want to point out that Chapter 14 of the 2,000 Comprehensive General Plan, since I sat through the whole of the 1972 Plan, and I know there's more going on, but I just want to touch on four. The goal is to identify and preserve the historic heritage of Evanston to benefit current and future residents. And then there's a lot of policies. One is to increase recognition of historic preservation issues beyond architecture. Another good one is protect Evanston's historic landmark structures and districts, include the significant open spaces, and an integral contributing factor to the character of Evanston's historic districts, and identify historical and cultural resources for their potential in the enhancement of Evanston as a regional tourist destination. Tourist destinations are a big thing now. You've got a lot of money, you've got people in there, they look at interesting things, they stay for lunch, they get real interested, then they stay for supper, and if you're absolutely fantastic, number-one kind of place, then they decide they want to live there, and then the prices of houses will go way up. Okay. I want to make a statement. I would like to make a pledge of $5,000 and the help of my family and friends to enhance the parking lot outside the library for the use of the community to promote everything in the plan, of course, and help people get to know this community better. So I've got the money, I can write the check right now, if you all agree that, yes, you'll want to do it, but I know we want to have quiet, thoughtful consideration of anything. But I'm good for it, and I've showed, I've sat through more council meetings, I think, than anybody still alive in Evanston. And I believe in this place, and I can... Oh, I forgot to tell you.
Real quick, Virginia, we're past our time.
Our good friend Francis Willard is one of the two representatives of Illinois in the Capitol Building. That means that if you want to and you can get the permission, and I know how to get the permission, you can go there and have them set it all up for free for any kind of a meeting you want, moderation, but one would be perfectly fine every year. I think it would be neat to have a sign there saying, "She came from Evanston," because she did quite a few things that you don't ever hear about because there are people who believe that we should concentrate on something else. Thank you also very much.
Thank you.
I'm ready, I've got my phone.
We know where to find you, if we want the $5,000. Thank you. All right, Harris Miller, Steve Miller, then Sarah Schostock.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Harris Miller. I'm from the Fourth Ward, and I oppose the development of the library parking lot. Please vote against the 11-story office building proposal at 1714 to 20 Chicago Avenue because the structure's height and bulk does not fit the block. DAPR rejected it twice, and the Plan Commission did too. We cannot stand to see our downtown ruined by inappropriate development. I have a few points here. Number one, it will affect the Francis Willard House, the Women's Club, and the Women's National Historic District because the administrators will question the historic viability of the district and its grant eligibility. Two, remember Sitzelwood Davis, the proposed high-rise building, and a second high-rise proposal that was made on Chicago Avenue by the Marion that will cause more congestion and parking needs. Number three, this should not make up for Robert Crown-induced financial crisis. Number four, finally, please listen to the citizens and small businesses, or we will lose trust in our elected and employed city officials. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Harris. We've got Steve Miller, Sarah Schostock, and then Mark Tendem.
Good evening. I believe that residents deserve an explanation for the sudden Robert Crown cost increase. It went from $30 million to $53.4 million in under two years, and even that downplays it. Actually, Evanston's contribution went from $10 to $40 million. That's a 300% increase among residents in under two years. Flimsy justification for that was that the $30 million didn't include a parking lot, sewers. Then don't give us that estimate. I mean, that's like offering a car without mentioning, oh, by the way, there's an extra charge for the engine. Yeah, I think it needs parking and sewers. So granting that, the person who made that argument, we would add another 12 for these other things, that's now gone from 30 to 42. That still leaves $10 million unexplained after we've added construction inflation, a parking lot, and sewers. One question's whether the $30 million was in good faith, which I'm getting to another point. Defenders of the current design and the price argue that objections like mine should have been raised year after year in 30 meetings about it. Well, I have news for you. Had I known it would be $53.4 million, I would have been there 30 times recommending an equally functional but less elaborate, less expensive design. I feel like we were misled, and that's why you didn't hear any objections during prior meetings. Thank you respectfully.
Thank you. Sarah Schostock, Mark Tendem, then Marsha Kerr.
Good evening. I do agree with others who've spoken that this is not a project that should be approved for the reasons that have been stated already this evening. I think we should be looking at this building not just from the very detailed observations about failings in the building and the purchase and sale agreement, but let's think about this site and the opportunity that we have to do it right for Evanston, that we could do it well, and that we could think about the next 100 years. Because a building really is a contract with the future, and this building would affect the lives of people who haven't even been born yet. This is not the time for you who have to make this difficult decision to say, well, I'm not crazy about the building, but it's the best we could do, the city needs the money. You've just heard for ways of reducing some of the needs for money in the city with the changes in Robert Crown. This is not the time to say, well, we better be careful and take this one, or we'll get something worse with the next proposal, because the city owns the lot and makes the decisions. This is not the time to shut down people that don't agree with you. This is the time to include the whole city in this process. The site doesn't belong to any one ward. It is our place, our downtown. It's a community place. It's the time to respect the judgments of the experts on DAPR and the Plan Commission. Putting the result prior to the process quite predictably failed to lead to good results. So let's look forward to the future, what we can do, maybe something brilliant, Alderman Rainey, as you suggested before.
Thank you, Sarah. We've got Mark Tendem, Marsha Kerr, then Lori Keenan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Tendem, and not that long ago, I sat where you're sitting tonight, and we did, I did support an RFP for development on the 1720 Chicago Avenue, better known as the library parking lot. I thought then, and I still believe it's a good idea, to develop that property, but I don't think that the current proposal really honors the intention of the RFP that we wrote several years ago. It would be very tempting tonight to talk about some of the narrative, problems in the narrative of this project, but I'd like to go back to a couple of things, a couple of issues I raised back a couple of years ago, and just bring those forward tonight because I think they're still very valid. I think what one of the speakers said is that not a lot of questions that were raised in the process of this project have truly been answered. The biggest one that I can think about really is the original RFP process resulted in the submission of an RFP by one group, the original group of Connor Commercial, McShane Construction, and Wright-Harima Architects, but they vacated this idea several years ago. The proposal included, as you might expect, 12 pages of professional background materials highlighting their collaborations on many completed projects. To the best of my knowledge, the proposal before you tonight has never included such valuable information. How did this team really come to be? Did they simply assume the role that Connor and Connor Commercial and the others vacated? And what do we know about the investors, T2 Purple Cats and R2 Evanston Investor LLC? They're also mentioned, but there's actually no elaboration on who these people are and how they work with the city. I know this project is, the sale price of this parcel is attractive, $4 million, but to put that in perspective, $4 million is about a year and a half or less of debt service on Robert Crown. It's a lot of money, but it's not going to be a noticeable difference in our city finances. Secondly, the narrative of this project has raised recently the amount of money that we spent by tenants and workers in this building. It places it at $7.3 million annually. If you break that down into the number of expected employees, that's the average of $300 a week per employee. That's a lot of lunch money. So I hope you will look at this narrative for what it is. It sounds nice, but it's not all about completing, it certainly doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. We've got Marsha Kerr, Lori Keenan, then Joan Stafford.
Good evening. I am Marsha Kerr. I'm a condo owner at 1738 Chicago. I attended several meetings now. This, I came up with this when I was talking to the Plan Commission. So I decided that I would circulate a petition in opposition to zoning the Amendment for proposed building at 1714 to 1720. I have signatures from over 60% of the owners at our building. We have several concerns, some of them have been discussed already. One major one is the traffic in the alley. We see it every day. It's trucks, it's workmen, it's people, it's students. Really, there's a lot of foot traffic as well as vehicles. We do think that that space that the new building would bring forward to the alley provides a blind spot. Even if there's a stop sign there, you know, you're going to miss something somewhere. So we're very concerned about the alley and also backups on Church Street, Chicago, and We also mentioned the size and bulk of the proposed design of the building. We don't think it's compatible with the Women's Club or the historic structures, and we are concerned about possible damage to those historic buildings. We are also concerned about the loss of parking. I won't go into any detail about that, I think enough people have discussed it, but we very strongly feel that this is not the right building for that spot.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you.
We've got Lori Keenan, Joan Stafford, and then Kira Kelly.
Hi, my name is Lori Keenan. I'm here tonight wearing a number of hats, primarily as co-president of the Evanston Public Library Friends. I'm speaking on behalf of the library parking lot issue, and I thought Ben Shapiro was here, I was going to quote him, so I hope I'm right. The president of the library board spoke at a planning commission meeting saying that 1,700 people use the library services and probably are using that lot as well. As you know, when we were talking about branch libraries, the investment, the return on investment that people bring to a community when they visit their local library is, for every dollar, it brings $6 to $8 back to the community. We heard tonight from the business owner at Chandler's about what a detriment this would be. We've heard a number of other reasons why the library parking lot building isn't appropriate. I'm also here as a mother. It's been a long time since I had to buckle anyone into car seats, but I can tell you, if I had to put four kids in a car seat, drive them to a downtown parking garage, get them into an elevator, four and a half blocks to the library, I might just as well go to the Wilmett Storytime and shop there and go to Melons Harbor instead. So, and I'm here as a community member. I think it's important that you honor and respect the commissions and boards, that you've asked to volunteer to spend their time. Both DAPR and the Planning Commission have said this is inappropriate. I also am here, I work with an organization in town that works with older adults and does a lot of work within that capacity, and I think that we're also creating a threat for older adults if that parking lot isn't available. I think that you're here to serve the interests of the community. I think you have... I think you have a right to sell that property, but I think we need to look at space and a building and something that's more appropriate, that is safer, that doesn't open us up to a lawsuit. I would like to see something in scale for Evanston. It's between two historic buildings. Let's not turn Evanston into Rogers Park. I'm also concerned, when I heard Mark Tendem mention, one of the proponents, one of the tenants is possibly T2 Purple Cats. I don't know who that is, but if that turns into a Northwestern thing, and then that building comes off the tax rolls, that's, I think that's something we need to think about. I urge you to reject this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joan Stafford, Kira Kelly, and then Margie Rogasner. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing people's names. Okay, come on up, Joan. So it'll be Kira Kelly, Margie Rogasner, and Bennett Johnson will be the last speaker tonight.
I'm going to pare it down, particularly because I have failed to pare down on my other appearances, and simply say that the whole process, which I would like to address at a later council meeting, the whole process that was, of this having a request for proposal, which proposed a zoning change without being in contact with the neighbors at that time when they're, they could have organized at that time in opposition, as they later did, was a terrible mistake. The idea that when the city owns property, it can put out a proposal which is contrary to the zoning ordinance and contrary to the comprehensive plan, and a developer can assume, as Mr. Janicki did, that the change in the zoning is in the cards, is, sets a very, very bad precedent. And the latest proposal to have what I can only describe as in lieu of parking in office buildings sets a pretty bad precedent also. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Kira Kelly, and then Margie, and then Bennett Johnson.
Hi. I'm speaking about the library parking lot, and with these very enormous and complicated high-rise developments, it's critical that the public know that real review processes are in place, zoning ordinances are being followed, and aldermen are committed to making decisions based on expertise and facts. That said, two expert commissions, DAPR and Plan Commission, have people with specialized knowledge to evaluate these proposals, see how it meets the zoning code, see how it works with other important factors, and they've all advised you to reject this proposal. Again, the 11th hour modifications on height and parking do not answer to their key concerns. We know that these recommendations are advisory, but do you, as council members, feel knowledgeable enough to dismiss concerns, red flags about safety, about zoning variances? Further, residents rightfully expect council to uphold zoning laws. This development requires spot zoning, so changing one site in the middle of a block from residential to D3, which is the most dense downtown development. If developers can spot zone, then what is the point of zoning, really? Further, these seven variances means to me that it's breaking our zoning code in seven ways. What about the library, a key stakeholder? The board president, as Laurie mentioned, said the loss of this lot would hinder its ability to serve 1,700 daily patrons. Meanwhile, we're funding the library to provide more services to more people, which is wonderful, but yet we may be hindering their delivery to deliver them. As Laurie mentioned, I myself am a mom of twins and four children, and I would definitely avoid parking in a difficult, complicated, high-rise lot where strollers are involved and such. I would drive elsewhere, I believe, or skip the whole thing. And I wonder how the elderly feel about this as well. Finally, whether you like it or not, these giant buildings are likely your biggest legacy as aldermen, in addition to Robert Crown. This could be your fourth in our small downtown. You are rebuilding and fundamentally changing our city, so I hope that you will be responsible with this, with this power that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Okay. Come on up and pronounce your name correctly, in case I've been destroying it, and then we have Bennett Johnson will be last. Welcome.
Rogasner is the last name. And I'm one of the elderly that she's talking about. And I just, I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I was on vacation, so I couldn't go to your town hall meeting. And I went to, while we were in New York City, we went to see Howard Beal in Network. And he's, he's the one that says, I'm mad as heck, and I can't take it anymore, and so I decided I will speak. So I just assume that you must not have thought about the inconvenience that this project will cause all of us, especially those older ones and younger ones. For example, the Robert Crown, the Sherman and Lake project, the Emerson Benson, the north of the post office on Oak Avenue one, none of those inconvenient are going to be inconveniences of people. They don't inconvenience the businesses around it, they don't inconvenience people who are walking around there. They're all, you can just have, your daily life is not going to be affected. This one affects the daily life. So maybe you hadn't really been thinking about those inconveniences when you decided to do this. For two years, you're going to have this construction. The Celtic Knot, the Vietnamese Restaurant, the Mount Everest, Chandler Building, the Carlson Building, they're going to be affected. The employees there are going to be affected. Two years, you're talking about a construction. There's nothing you said about what you're going to do in that interim and even afterwards. There's no, you've had nothing to say about any of that. You claim that there's going to be availability of spaces in the garage, but this is a private building. Is the garage parking going to be the same cost as the city, which, by the way, is now going up? The price is going up on Friday. Is the cost of the garage going to be, because it's a private building, can they just raise whatever price they want to price for the parking spaces? And will, because it's private, I have one last thing, because it is private, will they still be open for the Celtic Knot when they don't close till 2:00 in the morning? Will they still be available to have the parking availability for people to go through their lobby to get out onto Chicago Avenue? And finally, no, I'm sorry, advertisement has, as that gentleman said about Robert Crown, he would have been there if he'd known about it. I can't tell you the number of people who do not know about this project. How many times I've told people, and they don't know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bennett Johnson, you're going to wrap us up tonight, and we've got a minute 45 if you need it, Bennett. Welcome.
Member of City Council, Mayor Hagerty, City Clerk, and Mr. Bobkowitz. You are all officially invited to a meeting on Thursday, February 28, at 6:30 in the parasol room, discussing the Harley-Clark matter. And you won't be put on the spot, you'll be dealing with the people whom you represent, because no matter what your title is, you actually are what they call public servants. So you have a chance to meet the people whom you serve, discuss it with them, and on a even level, without sitting on your thrones. That's an exaggeration. My point simply is that one of the, the word demos, as some of you know, is a Greek word for people, and the basis for the term democracy, which we use very frequently. One of the reasons why I like to live in this town is what you've just seen. The people in Evanston participate, which makes all the difference in the world, because whether you hear them or not, you'll hear them at the ballot box. And I'm asking you again, so don't wait for the ballot box. Come to the meeting on Thursday, listen to the people whom you serve, and see what they have to say about Harley-Clark. Thank you very much. It's 6:30, parasol room. Everybody.
Thank you, Bennett. And thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking so eloquently about a variety of issues, particularly the library parking lot. We're now, we're now going to move into the agenda for the evening. The first items up are special orders of business. We have two. The first one's SP1 ordinance 10-0-19 amending portions of the city code titled "Seven Public Ways to Include Police Powers to the Director of Public Works." Staff recommends city council adopt this ordinance, which will amend portions of the city code to include police powers to the director of public works. This is for action. Is there anyone that will move this motion?
Move approval.
A second. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
All right, SP1 ordinance 10-0-19 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote, with Alderman Fleming voting no. All right, we're going to move on to the second item under special orders, which is SP2 ordinance 13-0-19 amending the city code section 8-4-6C, private scavenger provided receptacles. Staff's recommending that the council adopt this ordinance, that the private scavenger provided receptacles, requiring trash receptacles be locked in the downtown zoning district. As you guys recall from our prior meeting, this used to be in the city code and was accidentally removed, so they're just correcting an error from before. This is for action. Is there anyone that will move this?
Move approval.
For a second? Okay, seeing, seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
All right, excellent. That passed ordinance 13-0-19, the Evanston City Council, on a nine to zero vote. Okay. All right, we're now going to move to the consent agenda. Alderman Sufferton, I believe you just took over the Administration Public Works Committee. Could you take us through the consent, well, M1, and then take us through APW, please?
Sure. Item M1 is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 12, 2019, and February 18, 2019. This is for action. Item A1 is a payroll January 21, 2019, through February 3, 2019, the amount of $3,395,286,97. That is for action. Item A2 is the bills list in the amount of $3,840,928.39. The BMO credit card activity period ending December 26, 2018, without Amazon purchases in the amount of $161,281.90. That is for action. I am going to skip A3.
All right, pull A3 off.
A4 is a contract for engineering services for Oakton Street water supply connection with the Village of Lincolnwood with Greeley and Hanson LLC. This one is for action. Item A5, contract for engineering services for a water system vulnerability assessment and emergency response plan with ACOM. That is for action. Item A6 is financial advisor services agreement with PFM Financial Advisors LLC. Also for action. Item A7, engagement with Chapman &amp; Cutler LLP for bond counsel. For action. Item A8 was removed. Item A9 is.
To hold that.
Item A9 is also held. Item A10, Resolution 14.
Sorry, can I just get clarity? Is A9 removed, or it's being held in some, in committee?
I'd like to.
Just take it off.
Yeah, I'd like to take it off.
So we discuss it.
I'd like to hold it to a future meeting.
Remove from the consent agenda.
Okay, and then we'll do that. Okay, got it. Got it, okay.
All right. Item A10 is a Resolution 14R19, intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School, District Number 202, for implementation of body-worn cameras. That is for action. Item A11 is Ordinance 6019, sale contract for city-owned real property located at 1729 Dodge Avenue to Evanston Township High School, District Number 202. That is for introduction. Item A12 is an Ordinance 14019, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for stacked and folded at 824 Noise Street. That is for action. That is it.
Thank you, Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle, can you take us through planning and development and appointments?
Sure. Okay, I'm assuming P1 is off the agenda, however.
Oh, one of your, I imagine people are going to want this taken off. Yes, it's off.
Okay, let's, okay. Appointments, appointment of Donald Wilson as chair of the Ethics Subcommittee, and this is for action.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Always a joker. All right, the consent agenda passed the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Sufferton, can you take us to A3?
Sure. Item A3 is the BMO Amazon credit card activity for the period ending December 26, 2018, in the amount of $3,002.2.
Is there someone that will move that?
Move approval.
Second.
City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Abstaining.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
All right, A3 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. A8?
Sure. Item A8 is a service provider agreement with the YWCA Evanston North Shore in the amount of $75,000.
That was held in committee.
I'm sorry, A8 was held in committee? Okay, so that's no further discussion then. In committee. Okay. Alderman Sufferton, A9?
A9 is a grant agreement with Youth Job Center to provide funding for a career partnership manage, manager. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to sign a grant agreement with Youth Job Center to provide funding in the amount of $90,000 to help cover the costs of a career partnership manager. The position will help facilitate the partnership between the Youth Job Center, the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council, Evanston Township High School, and other community partners who are dedicated to supporting youth and young adults. Funding will be from the Good Neighbor Fund. Thank you, Northwestern. Other program costs with a fiscal year budget of $370,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, open for discussion?
I'm asking that we hold this for a future meeting for more information.
Okay, the city staff, can we talk about it? Understand what the more information is.
I think there has to be a vote on that, since there's a motion to hold it.
Okay, okay.
Well, there has to be a vote.
Yeah, it would be useful to know what information is.
To give some direction.
It doesn't mean that.
This could be a point of information then.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rule 1811 does state that an alderman may ask either the city manager or the alderman requesting the holdover to explain the impact of the holdover at the time the holdover was requested.
Can you do a point of information, just to understand?
The.
Can we understand, I mean, Alderman Ruth Simmons, can you explain why, why you're requesting the holdover?
Is explanation a requirement?
No, an explanation is not a requirement. However, it doesn't mean that debate stops. So if you need specific information, we could, we could request it.
The debate would be on the motion to hold.
The rule states that you can ask for additional information.
Point of order, point of order. I think the rule says that the impact can be explained, and I think the person who can best explain the impact is either the city manager or the mayor regarding the impact on holding it.
Or what about the point of information, just to understand the nature of the hold?
No.
It's not required in the code.
No, I know it's not required, but this is a simple courtesy. I'm just trying to understand why. I wasn't at the meeting.
It would just, it would seem to make some sense if we want information to know what the information is.
Yeah.
But that's, isn't that something that the alderman who made the request can discuss with?
Or just share.
Sure. So I'll start with having a more comprehensive understanding of what we're doing for workforce development, where the dollars are being spent, making sure that money is going direct to services and not as much in salaries. In addition to that, I've requested a update and report on Elevate Evanston. I'm still unclear on what's happening there. There's quite a bit of work happening in committee with workforce development, as well as with staff, and Alderman Rainey in previous committee has asked for a report and inventory on what we're doing to make sure that we're not overlapping, having redundant services, just trying to vote from an informed perspective and not from an emotional one. So I would like to hold this until I can get those answers that I have requested previously in previous meetings.
Yeah, now there's a vote.
We don't vote on this.
Alderman Rainey, did you have something to hear? This is from before.
No.
Okay, all right, so I guess there's no further discussion?
I recognize the prerogative of it all.
I think this is, okay. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, so I just would like some clarification. So when you move to hold, and it's seconded, does that stop discussion?
I think there might be getting some miscommunication, because the council rule for tabling states that, that matters no longer, not debatable. But in this rule, that is not stated. However, it does indicate that now, now it's held, and now we're moving on to the next issue.
All right.
So that, that's my point.
Okay, so for clarification, I'm sorry to beat this, but it seems like we've done this different ways and different conversations. So I think if that, if the rule for table is no more discussion, then maybe at the next Rules Committee, we can clarify this rule, because we have held things before where there's not been an ask on the spot of someone to ask why they're holding it. I think if the rule is that it can be held, and at that second, then I, my understanding was it was held, and I appreciate that Alderman Simmons was able to think on her feet and make a-- Well, I respond to bullying well, so. Hmm. But I just feel like if, if this is, if the rule is you hold and no communication, then we stick with that rule. If the rule is you hold, and there's an impact conversation, then that's the rule. So I would like to have this rule clarified at the Rules Committee, because I, I think we need to be consistent in how we handle motions. And I've seen it done both ways, so I would like clarity on this one, in the Rules Committee.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. Alderman Revelle, can you take us P1?
Sure. Ordinance four dash zero dash nineteen, granting a special use permit for a planned development located at seventeen fourteen seventeen twenty Chicago Avenue, and amending the zoning map. Plan commission and staff recommend annihilation of the ordinance for approval of a map amendment. And, okay, this is a planned development for an eleven story office building with seventy-six onsite parking spaces. Passage of the map amendment shall require a favorable vote of three fourths of the alderman per city code six dash three dash four dash seven, because a petition signed and acknowledged by thirty percent of owners of the property within five hundred feet of the subject property was submitted to the city. And this is for action.
Okay, this item's open for, open for discussion. Okay, Alderman, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. So obviously, I've listened to the questions and concerns of the community. I'm not going to reiterate any of that. But what I, what I do have some concerns on are a couple of points. One, obviously, the development team has evolved over a period of time. And I'm interested in just getting some more information on, on what that team looks like. Of, I think of greater concern to myself is the, I'll say long-term, but it's not really that long-term. If, for example, and, and the contract itself's not on the agenda, so, but I have a concern in proceeding on this point with this concern about the contract. If we change the zoning, the property is sold and the development doesn't proceed, then obviously we have a significant problem. So I think what we ought to consider is, what is the, you know, what is the, what is the exit strategy if that situation occurs? So my thought is that we need to build something into the contract, and of course, that would have to be at a subsequent meeting, because it is not on the agenda. But something would have to be in the contract that would either be some sort of escrowed proceeds, so that if the project does not proceed, we would get the property back. Obviously, the purchaser would get the money back. But I do not feel comfortable at all going forward if we're going to have it potentially in that kind of a limbo state, if, if things don't work out for the developer or with the tenants. And I realize that they have the best intentions, but I don't want to put the community on the hook.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, could you explain to us what we have done in other cases of selling city owned property? The recycling center is one. The city owned parking lot across the street on Chicago Avenue, on the east side of Chicago Avenue, is another. City Yards is another. I can probably think of more. The potential sale on South Boulevard is another. How do we, how have we handled those sales? And what restrictions have we put on?
You know, I think that the processes have varied over time. You mentioned two that are in process. The recycling center is, is under discussion right now, so those, the council has directed me to negotiate a, a sale agreement, so that process is underway. The South Boulevard parking lot is even in a more early stage. There's been no direction for negotiations there. I think generally, as a past practice, when the city sells property, it depends on its role in the development. Certainly, the properties we have sold over a longer period of time in the downtown that have been part of developments that we have steered a little bit more directly. So I think that that's, that's probably not as applicable here. As I think the council is aware, there was an RFP process. Then the council had a, a purchase agreement that was extended once. The current language of the purchase agreement says that it would move forward with the appropriate zoning permissions given. So I, I think generally speaking, the council, this council and other councils that sell property, want to make sure that the property is being sold at a fair price for the purpose intended. And so language in the agreements, depending again on the particular deals, would reflect that.
Okay, so if, so what are the appropriate questions, then, to ask? And how long will it take? And where, where do we go from here? So what's, what's a process that we follow to get the information and put, and put the protections in place for the city?
As far as the property sale agreement is concerned, my understanding in talking with Alderman Wilson is, is that there, and the Corporation Council, that there is, there is language that would indicate that the, the property sale would not move forward until a building permit had been issued for the property. So language could be there. I would refer to the Corporation Council on, on the terms of art associated with that. So if that is the council's direction to us, I think we would need to meet with the, the parties that are named in the agreement that we currently have, which has been amended once, to make sure that they concur in that. If that is the case, the drafting of this language, I think, is pretty straightforward. Your next regular meeting is on March the eleventh, and I would suspect, Corporation Council, that we could come back to the council with a revised agreement at that time.
And is, I'm, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Michelle?
Sure.
And then I want to say something else.
Based on Alderman Wilson's comments, it sounds like a, a right of reverter would be inserted into a deed. So we would amend the agreement to provide for further restrictions to address the situation in which a developer could purchase the property and then never pull the building permit, and then the property would be rezoned. So the agreement would be amended to add a right of reverter to the deed, so that this would be always recorded on title. Sounds like Alderman Wilson has some questions about the development team, so we would need information from the developer regarding the Delaware LLC, whether or not it's managed or managed or member managed. So we're going to need their operating agreement and things like that.
The reason, Mr. City Manager, for me to raise the questions is that I think we need to be as clear as possible, given the length of the process and the cooperation that we've had from the development team, that we make it as clear as possible what information we're really asking them to provide. Because, you know, just to keep, keep moving this and moving the goalposts, I think, is not what is intended here. I respect the fact that Alderman Wilson has been thinking about this and, and has raised these issues. But I guess I'd like to get a sense of whether the development team is amenable to sitting down with the city and answering, answering these questions. I don't think this is the appropriate place to do it, the microphone, but if, if that's something that would work for them, and it looks like it might, then I'm going to make a motion to table this until a, the next regularly scheduled council meeting, at which all nine aldermen are present.
Second.
And Alderman Fisk, members of the council, my understanding is that we may have one or two absences on the eleventh, which is the next regularly scheduled meeting, so that would likely then take us to March eighteenth. March twenty-fifth, the council's already going to be dark for multiple spring vacations, so.
Could we just, could we just ask if those absences are still planned for the eighteenth? I'll be absent on the eleventh, I'll be here on the eighteenth. Okay. And anybody else not here on the eighteenth?
Eighteenth works for me.
Okay, so the eighteenth sounds like--
The motion would be the eighteenth, then.
Sounds like the date, then.
Date certain.
But my, my motion to table still stands that, that meeting include all nine aldermen.
I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I, it was just, the mayor was asking if there was a second.
I second. There was a second, okay. I second.
And I just wanted to reassert my, that my motion includes a meeting where all nine aldermen are present.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded, we need to vote on that. But we have discussion, right?
We need to vote to table right now. But she voted to table.
But we, but we can have discussion about that, right? Or not. Oh, sorry.
The table, you can't, it's not debatable.
It's not debatable. Okay, so it's, it's not debatable, so we just vote then?
So we just vote, so.
We have to vote on it.
I know there were other lights up here, and people were interested in talking about the issue. So I'll, if I withdraw my second, then hold your motion.
No, I'm fine.
And then, no, I'll withdraw my second, so let's capture all the questions, and then I'll put it back in. Keep it simple. All right, so there's a motion, and nobody's, and nobody's now seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay, so now--
Two, like three times.
So now we need, now we need to take a vote. There's still lights, and there's still questions. There is still lights.
And just seconded it.
I mean, that's, that's the way the rules are written. Is that correct, Michelle? I don't, okay.
Let's just vote.
All right, so we're going to go, we're going to go ahead and take a vote, City Clerk.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
She, she--
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Okay, so the motion to table to March eighteenth, or when the full council is present, that motion to table has passed on a six to three vote. That's why we give help. That's why we give help and second. Okay, but that's--
What, yeah.
It just passed on a six to three vote--
Yep.
--to, to hold this until the full council's here, which people have indicated is March eighteenth. Okay, so--
Stay in the standing.
I'm sorry, who is? I'll recognize you, Ms. Bailey.
A date certain, please, and advertise the date, because I don't have a notebook working, whatever you're here is doing. I, sometimes I might, but I don't--
Fair, fair, fair enough. Fair, fair enough.
At least a week ahead of time, knowing when it's coming.
Yeah, we will, we will--
Somebody gets pneumonia.
Yep. We, you bet, you bet. We will, we will, we will make sure that this is advertised, and it will be on the agenda for Mar, for March eighteenth, as long as the full city council is present. Okay? All right, so that concludes the discussion on, on this item, unless there's any way to have any more discussion on it. City Attorney, I can't, I can't. Okay? All right, so with that, we're going to move to our call of the wards. Alderman Wilson?
I'll just express that I'm kind of disappointed with the whole idea of not, you know, letting the group have conversations on an issue, so.
I agree. Okay, Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Look for a statement regarding the proposed development on Emerson and Wesley in our newsletter,